Township of Union, Township of Union, planning board meeting for Thursday, June 22, 2023 is called order. Ms. Ralid, would you please recite the sunshine law?
Pursuant to the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting stating the time and place was satisfied by the filing of an annual notice with the local source and the Star Ledger, newspapers of general circulation within the Township of Union and posted on the bulletin board of the Township of Union Municipal Building.
Thank you, Ms. Ralid. Ms. Fitzpatrick, please swear in, the township engineer, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For approval of the minutes of May 25, 2023, I'd like a motion for approval, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendments of May 25 meeting.
Second. Second. Roll call vote.
Ms. Frazier.
Abstain, not present.
Mr. Lee.
Here, yes.
Mr. Lewis. Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Reverend Starling.
Abstain, not present.
Committee, Mayor Figurito.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Ms. Ricketts.
Abstain, not present.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Committeeman Johnson, Chairman Johnson.
Yes. For resolutions, for Silva Associates Investments LLC, like to make a motion for approval, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Silva Associates Investments LLC, application 2022-16.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. A second, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, thank you, Mr. Lee. Roll call vote.
Ms. Frazier.
Abstain.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Reverend Starling.
Abstain.
Mayor Figurito.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Ms. Ricketts.
Abstain, not present.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes. Resolution JP Morgan Chase Bank NA, like to have a motion for approval, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution in reference to application 2023-05.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. May I have a second, please?
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Ms. Ricketts.
Abstain, not present.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes. And for new business flood plan management regulations.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Chairman, we didn't do application 2023-04 Gecko Construction, the resolution.
Okay. Like for Gecko Construction Group, may I have a motion for approval, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution for Gecko Construction Group.
Second. Mr. Lee, second.
Mr. Cohen, a second, good.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Frazier.
Abstain.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Reverend Starling.
Abstain.
Mayor Figurito.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Ms. Ricketts.
Abstain.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, for new business flood plan management regulations, like to hear a motion for approval of consent.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve and consent for flood plan mitigation.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. A second, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Frazier.
Abstain.
You can, this was just being presented tonight, if you choose to vote in the, in the positive.
You can say yes.
Yeah, it's just being tonight, it's an ordinance just for tonight.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's okay. Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Reverend Starling.
Yes.
Mayor Figurito.
Yes.
Committeeman Bowser.
Yes.
Ms. Ricketts.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now for application 2023-08 at 407 Chestnut and for application 2023-09, 1489 Morris Avenue, those matters have been tabled, so if anybody's here for those matters, they've been tabled for another day. Brainiacs, Mr. Hale, I trust you'll be doing the honors.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Steve Hale, representing the applicant Brainiacs, and I'll give a brief introduction as Ms. James goes to the podium. This is a great, great application. It's permitted use in the zone, we're looking to put a childcare facility in the vacant CVS. It's in the newly created neighborhood core zone, was previously in a business, another business zone, but regardless, as you probably are aware, childcare centers, even if it's permitted under the ordinance, are permitted in all non-residential zones. The, and Jenny will explain a bit about her existing business, she already has a childcare facility in the community, and that one's going to remain under conditions which are not being impacted by this application. As part of the application, you'll see, and our architect will explain, and as you've seen on the plans, we're going to be introducing a new child, I'm sorry, a new playground, which is a small play area, which is going to be basically behind the building facing Morris, and also a new trash area, which will actually shield and cover that in. So it's, again, and we'll go through, but again, the variances are pre-existing, lot width and parking setback, and one of the nice things too, we also, despite taking, losing a little bit of parking for the play area, we still exceed the parking requirements for the zone. We have had an opportunity to review the departmental comments, no problem at all, we'll work with, if needed, the Health Department, we've reviewed the Collier's letter from Engineer Venesia, again, no problem complying with any of those terms and conditions. So I'd like to have our, Ms. James sworn in.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Would you please swear in the witness.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Oops, thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give the board tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And would you please spell your name for the record?
G E N N A I A.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, you probably, you can maybe take that out. There you go.
G E N N A I A.
G E N A A.
N as in Nancy, N as in Nancy.
Oh.
A I A.
Okay, and.
Last name James.
That one I can do. Thank you.
Okay, hold on to the mic there. All right, so you've been sworn, tell us a little bit about, you've heard my introduction, a little bit about your existing business in the community and your experience in childcare.
So currently, we're at 2147 Springfield Avenue on, in Box Hall, and I'm licensed for 69 kids, I'm currently at capacity, and I've been there for 13 years in, in the area. I have my masters in childhood education and in school administration, so I've been in education for 20-plus years now, and I love it, I mean, I don't know what else to say about it. So I'm just looking to move to expand because we're out of room, and also we help out, we help out the town with their preschool expansion. So I'm looking to continue those contracts and also keep the ones that I have.
And that's, you have a contract with, with the township?
With Union Public Schools now.
Great. So tell us a little bit about, and we know we have, Tom is going to explain the site plan in more detail, but why this site, the vacant CVS, works well for you and what you envision as far as the operation at that location?
It's large enough to accommodate the capacity because we are growing, and also the need that Union has because they're running out of room with their preschool expansion for their three-year-olds, so it would also greatly help them out, as well as anybody else in the community who needs childcare.
And tell us a little bit about, just first, the number of children that you may be able to service at this location. I know it's all governed by ultimately approval by the Division of Childcare Services, but let me touch on that first. So you did have a cursory inspection?
Right.
And you're aware, obviously, that ultimate approval of this site, if this board is kind enough to grant the application, would be by the Division of Child, Childcare?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're looking to accommodate 180 children in this site, and roughly 30 staff members with an assistant director.
Okay. And generally, what would be the hours of operation?
Between 7:00 to 6:30, which is what I do now on Springfield Avenue.
Okay. And as far as the, the location, I know it has, under the ordinance, adequate parking. Tell us a little bit about, in childcare, that the, generally, your, your peak hours, but did people come, come and go throughout the day?
So drop off, drop off and pickup is staggered, it's based on people's work hours. So we really, I don't want to say we have a peak because it's kind of staggered. We open at 7:00, so drop off can be anywhere between 7:00 to 9:30. Drop off can be anywhere from 7:00 to 9:30, depending on hours that people work, so it's really not a peak hour because it just kind of, it kind of flows.
Okay. And tell us a little how you intend to, and again, Tom will explain in more detail, you're adding the outdoor play area and, and approximate number of classrooms in the lot?
So so far on the plans, we have.
Six classrooms, please?
We have six classrooms, and outdoor play area will be on the side of the C, of the old CBS. So, so students will be able to come through the side door and go directly into the playground.
Okay. And I assume you've been experienced childcare, adequate security and safety will be utmost?
Yes, all those things will be covered, and it has to be for Department of Life and also.
Okay.
So we have all those things covered.
And drop off and pickup, the person, caregiver, parent, grandparent, would park and then walk the child in, they sign in and then?
And sign in. So they come in, sign in, drop the child off, and then for pickup, they do the same thing, pick the child up in the classroom and sign him out. So the drop off and pickup is relatively quick.
Okay. And then viewing the site, again, I know there's adequate parking under the ordinance at this site, feel there's more than adequate parking for the operation of your facility?
Yes.
Okay. And I think the other businesses, if you want to touch on, complement the, your use as far as the peak hours within that small strip center?
I believe they do, and I don't, and we should not interfere because I want to say they open up at like 11:00. So as they're, as we're dropping and picking off, I don't think we'll cross.
Great. Okay. I have no further preliminary questions of Ms. James at this time.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Ms. James, I have a couple of questions. Some of them are just curiosity. Do you provide meals for the youngsters there, or do parents provide them?
Both.
Okay. And then if it's, you have 69 now, and you're outgrowing, do you anticipate a full hundred new students?
I do, with helping out Union Public Schools because.
Yeah, would you tell us about that?
So for pre-K 3, Union Public Schools does what's called extended pre-K, and they allow three-year-old children to come to school at, for free. So they don't have enough space in the school buildings, so they offer out to private daycare centers to assist them in, in, you know, covering the amount of children. And there's always a waiting list. So a lot of students are, end up sitting out an extra year because there's not enough room in this, in the school district.
My microphone won't breathe. So those teachers, then, of those children, employees of Brainiacs or of Union?
They are employees of Brainiacs, but the funding comes from Union Public Schools.
Thank you.
And how many employees do you anticipate hiring?
Hiring, 30.
30, okay.
And how are they, how do they arrange in your six classrooms?
I normally do two teachers, a teacher and then a TA per classroom.
And I don't need to be rude on this, where do they park?
Where they park at the center I have, or?
At the new center, where do you anticipate?
At the new center, I anticipate them parking on the side so they'll be out of the way of customers who need to come into the stores.
Sure, okay. So you don't think that that will interfere with, you have 47, I think it is, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact number, but sufficient, more than sufficient?
More than sufficient. And not everybody has a car, so that's.
I agree, surely. But there, if you're going to, would there be 30 staff present?
Not at one time.
That's right.
Okay.
Is your staff staggered as well relative to their attendance? And just because I'm so interested in your principal points, and I know you're at the center, will you be offering at the center all the additional things, parents nights out till midnight, Saturdays and so forth?
So I'm not sure yet, but I will be doing before and after care. I don't know what the need on this side of town is going to be. I just know what the need is there, but possibly.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
In, in thinking about, I used to frequent the CVS when it was in that location, go to, go to that center frequently. The traffic flow is particularly challenging when there isn't any volume. There's ingress from, directly from Morris Avenue, which is a one-way, and then there's the driveway on Lehigh for ingress and egress. If, if your customers are leaving the parking lot and attempting to turn left to go back out onto Morris Avenue, if you have volume, there's going to be a lot of difficulty. Have you done any traffic study or anticipated that?
We didn't anticipate it because of, because of how it's staggered, but I believe there's something, we haven't done current.
Now, there wasn't a separate tra, traffic study done?
I'd suggest for your own benefit that you consider that, because it's not, the traffic flow around there is very challenging when there isn't volume. You know, you just sometimes if there's traffic backed up at the light at Morris Avenue, your folks are going to be sitting in the lot just attempting to get out onto Lehigh Avenue and turn left. Turning right is not an issue, but turning left could be a problem.
Okay.
So you might want to think about that. And then I have one other question regarding the dumpster. Its proximity to the playground, how are you going to be enclosing that in order to mitigate smell or, or anything else?
Tom can answer the dark, because I can answer to that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Mr. Lee?
Yes. So I, Ms. James, I know you told us a peak range of 7:00 AM to 9:30 AM.
6:30.
6:30.
I mean, what, for drop off or?
For drop off, yeah. What about, what about pickup? Is there kind of a peak hours for, a peak range for, for pickups?
So pickup normally ranges about 4:00 PM to 6:30.
Got it. Okay. And are, is your schedule staggered as well as, as, do you have like morning sessions, midday sessions, afternoons? Like, how, how long are, are the sessions throughout the day?
So we have full-day sessions, just the teachers are staggered.
Just the teachers are staggered. And then my other question about the 30 staff members which are staggered, it seems, are all 30 of them full-time employees, or is there also a mix of part-time?
There's a mix of part-time, floaters, full-time.
Got it. And then my last question pertains to transportation in which, from your experience, would you, would this site experience any kind of busing coming into the site, or is that just, is transportation merely the, the responsibility of the parents?
It's the responsibility of the parents. We don't offer transportation.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have a question, and it should be a quick one. You're going to have a lot of kids there, obviously.
I hope so.
What type of a security strategy do you have to make sure that they're all protected?
So we have the boxes on, on the doors, so parents have to enter their code to go in and out. Every parent has their own code, so we know who's entering the building, and we also have a camera system, and there'll be someone at the front door.
Will that camera be monitored?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have like any EMS or any type of person on staff in case of a medical emergency?
Everybody has their CPR certifications, but we don't have to have EMS for that number of children.
Yeah, just the, yeah, okay. So they do have CPR certification?
My entire staff doesn't, and they're required to have it.
Okay. And it, and circling back to Mr. Cohen's concern about traffic, if there, if it turns out there is a traffic problem, I trust you'll be calling the police department to help you direct traffic?
Yes.
If it's necessary?
If it's necessary.
If necessary. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public?
I'm sorry.
Sure, come on up.
You need, you just need to come up and give me your name, and I'll swear you in real quick. Okay, can you raise your right hand?
Okay.
Okay, do you, do you swear or affirm that, that the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Oh, sure.
Okay, and can you just, can you just give me your name and address? Sorry.
No problem. Mara Simeoni, 985 Potter Avenue. Sorry, I'm Italian, so I have an accent, okay, sorry, sorry.
985.
My question is just, I'm in the back area of my home on Potter Avenue. I have a wall, so I don't think I'm going to have any problems with you guys, but just making sure, are you doing any work in that area that I would have to worry about? I received a notice, and I'm worried that you're going to be intruding in somehow, no, right?
No.
Oh, thank God. That's all. That's all I know.
Nothing being built behind the building, is that what you're asking? Nothing additional being built behind the building?
Right, and intruding in it. I mean, there, there were built parking garages right behind it. I have no idea, are you going to destroy them or whatever? I have no idea, I'm just trying to.
Our next witness is going to show the site layout, and you can see where everything is.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hale, could you call your next witness, please?
Yes, sure, thank you. I'd like to call upon Thomas Reynolds.
Hey, and Ms. Fitzpatrick, would you please swear in the witness?
Sir, do you swear that the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And would you please spell your name?
Thomas Reynolds, T H O M A S, Reynolds, R E Y N O L D S.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds, if you could please give the board the benefit of your work, educational experience, area of expertise, and any licenses you hold. Yeah, so starting with education background, I went to NJIT, got my bachelor's in architecture, currently actually working on a masters of architecture because I intend to teach at some point. I have been in this field for 20 years now, actually, last month, and I've been, I've had my private practice for the last 10 years. Wow, yeah, time flies. I've been primarily working in the small commercial and residential space, daycare centers are, childcare centers are sort of right up the alley. I have presented before multiple boards, unfortunately, I haven't had the pleasure of being before this one yet. I used to serve on the zoning board in Montclair, so I'm pretty familiar with what this process is going to look like. And you've been accepted before those boards or courts? Yes, I've been accepted before by previous boards. I would offer, Mr. Reynolds, as an expert in the field of architecture.
So ordered. Please proceed.
Great, thank you. All right, so Tom, if you could take us through the, now, and I know you loaded all of the exhibits, and I think they're.
Mr. Hale, these are, these have already been submitted to the board, these exhibits?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So if you could take us through. We'll make, I was going to say, we'll make sure that they definitely get these. Sure. So what I wanted to start with is the existing site plan, which is before you, and one of the things to really note is, is what I think when this building was built was a rather nice strategy to tuck the trash behind the building, and I'm using behind, using Lehigh as the front because that's the orientation of the building, even though the ordinance says that the front is on the Morris Avenue side. So tucking the trash behind there. And then there came sort of a reality of the operation of that, which was getting the carters to pull back there, back in, get the cans, and pull back out. They never did it. Those trash cans moved into the driveway area, and we ended up with this sort of unsightly situation with Ms. James taking this space as a childcare center. We had an opportunity to not just address her needs inside the building, as well as the childcare requirements that she has, and outdoor play area, but also try to make something a little bit more sightly than what exists currently for the trash enclosures. So what we had done was try to reclaim some of the impervious coverage around the site, take the existing walkway and wrap it around the, the play area, creating one form of defensible space and boundary around the play area. Tie the play area into the existing building through the, what's marked as the egress door facing the play area, and fence that area in. And then we pulled the trash enclosure toward the front of that to help block the view from Lehigh Avenue. So using the building to block the view from Morris Avenue and block the child play area, but also using the trash enclosure to sort of block part of the view of the, of the play area. So we're probably going to end up having a board-on-board fence, something that's not visibly, you could see through, to handle that area. So what you see on this slide, the proposed changes, you really see that green space, that impervious coverage being recaptured, the extension of the walkways, and the moving of the trash enclosure. And then, so I wanted to show this, because this is what exists currently, just a bunch of dumpsters scooned at the end of the thing because the guys, when they come to pick it up, can't actually make that turn to grab them and come back out. because the guys, when they come to pick it up, can't actually make that turn to grab them and come back out. And this is a terrible rendering that was put together by our office, but it does give you an idea, if you imagine more of a board-on-board fence versus the transparent vinyl.
Just to be clear, have these pictures been submitted?
That's what I'm saying, we'll make sure this is...
But I need to mark them as exhibits.
Let's mark them as exhibit.
Yeah, the ones that were not previously submitted, let's just go back and just... You want to mark them?
Yeah, can we just go back? Okay, so I see that...
Just, we'll note them, so that's the...
Do we mark them individually or whole set?
Well, if you just go back one to the... Okay.
So we'll start... So we'll make this exhibit A1.
Okay.
Is existing.
Existing site. I guess it'll be A2, the proposed site. This was part of the previously submitted package. Do we still want to mark it?
Let's mark it anyway.
Oh, okay, all right.
A3, A4.
What do we call A3?
The proposed changes.
Okay, proposed changes.
Existing trash enclosure would be A5?
Four.
Oh, sorry. Existing trash.
And A5 will be our...
Got it, thank you so much.
Diagrammatic rendering. There were some... So, you know, the idea is that we somewhat protect the kids from the view of everything going on using the board-on-board fencing of the trash enclosure, but then also make it possible for the trash to actually be put in the enclosure by making it accessible to the trash carterers, which is a private hauler in this case. Then there were some comments from the engineers, consulting engineers, about the actual access and pattern through the site. We had prepared a sort of exhibit... A second. Where's that opening? I think I'll have to change the numbering on here, so this will be A6. This is showing... So one of the two comments was about fire trucks access through the site. So this is sort of using a standard 45-foot fire truck traversing through the site, making those turns, working their way out. And then what will be our exhibit A7, this is showing the garbage truck making a K-turn to actually grab the trash, get out, you know, make the turn. So that hopefully satisfies those comments from the engineer.
Okay, and then we can move on to the interior layout?
Yes. So I'm going to load up the plans that you guys already have in front of you. There we go. So what we have here...
This has been submitted, correct?
Yes, this has been submitted. This is the second page of the document you guys have received, LU1.2, that lower right-hand corner. The entry, what we wanted to do is create a way that can, if need be, help secure the site from anyone who might try to have nefarious actions towards these kids. So we kept a vestibule toward the front that creates a second layer of protection from anyone coming in. And then even though this playground area in the back will be fenced and closed, we also enclosed this area here, or kept this enclosed. So that's another place where people, you know, if they try to get in, they end up essentially getting locked into those areas before getting towards them. The building itself has a basement. There's a note here by column line three that says that a limit of the basement... There's a basement that exists in the back half of this building. So we're trying to create as much of the plumbing area where there's a basement that we could actually work with. So the bathrooms, the teachers' bathrooms, visitors' bathrooms, teachers' lounge, all exist in that back area. There's a creation of sort of two private, more private rooms. Those will be for the infants and toddlers. And because they're infants and toddlers, those are institutional uses versus educational by the code because they're unable to, you know, they wouldn't be able to get out themselves. That kind of pushes it towards that institutional use. So they require their own means of egress out of the building, which these doors back here give them. That brings them to the back walkway so they can exit the building if there's ever a fire or some other emergency. The teachers can, for the infants, roll out the beds and... And then for the toddlers, they can all be let out on, together with their teachers, through here. The balance of the space right now is more of a flexible area that she can... We're looking at using movable walls and other things like that so that as she has different age group needs, so they... Let me back up a little bit. The childcare manual has different space requirements based on age, and they vary greatly based on this sort of really developmental age group. So as she has different needs from the pre-K to the, you know, let's say, older toddlers, et cetera, she can change the size of the rooms to meet the needs of the students as well as the staffing that's there that day. And I think that really sums up how this plan is developed.
And I assume it's going to be, obviously, subject to state approval. This will need all applicable codes and the like.
The benefit of a childcare center is the review goes a little deeper than sort of the local review. They will have their state reviews if there's any cooking on-site, health, and so on and so forth. So there'll be a lot of eyes on this one.
Great, thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Questions from the board?
Yes, I just have one. Is there any area for ill children who are waiting for the parents to come and get here as fast as possible?
So, right now, this front waiting area is sort of the best, is what we have right now. There has been some discussion that the front will get a little bit more enclosed, so that is a possibility. We're looking to potentially add an executive director's office sort of suite over here, which could potentially be a place for students who are ill waiting for pickup.
And is there any... I guess it's the wrong person, but is there any medical staff available at my call or...
Here, why don't you come on up?
An emergency, specifically call out for help?
If there's a medical emergency, then we would call 911. But we don't have to have like a nurse on staff because of the number that we have. Over 200, you need to have a nurse on staff.
I have a question. Will each classroom have a bathroom? In each classroom? Or whomever?
Right now, we're going to have... No, each classroom will not have a bathroom. Each classroom will have hand-washed sinks in them for that hygiene need that's required in them. They'll... The bathrooms, again, will all be at that end of the corridor there towards the... We'll call it the playground area, towards the playground area. Sorry.
Okay, how many bathrooms are in the facility?
So there's the... So the number of bathrooms, we have the one for the boys and girls, one in each. And then we have one for teachers, which is part of the teachers' lounge. And then there's a visitors' bathroom towards the end of the hall, that this area here, the light blue one.
When you say one bathroom, that means one stall or one bathroom with several stalls?
Oh, no, sorry, there's multiple stalls inside. So there's actually... In the lower corner, there's the plumbing fixture count, which is the requirement of the plumbing code, analyzing the requirement of toilet and sinks and stuff, lavatories. So that's been accounted for on this, based on occupancy.
And the garbage area, is that for all of the businesses in that lot? Or is just for the daycare?
That'll be for all of the businesses. You know, right... As of right now, as I understand it, all the businesses take their garbage through that back walkway behind the site to the...
Can you go back to that picture?
Sure.
Oh, there, no.
So there's a walkway back here. So right now, let's go to the existing site plan. All of them take their trash down this walkway and deposit in all the dumpsters that are skewing around this area. So what we're proposing is to continue that around this new walkway to the dumpsters that'll be here.
And if someone were to walk in the front here to go into that dumpster, there is... That walkway does not go back into that playground area?
So if you... That playground area is going to be fenced from the building to the building, so wrapping around that whole playground area.
Okay. And so no one can walk over it?
It's not like you can just walk right in, no.
Thank you.
I just had one question pertaining to the dumpster area as well. If I were a child, or if I were a staff member in the playground area, and it's a little bit tough looking at the rendering to decipher it, if I were a staff member or a child in the playground area, would I visibly see the dumpster from that view? Or is there something actually obscuring it?
So the dumpster itself will have its own board-on-board fence, which will be visibly not able to see through. That wraps that, and then the playground has its own additional fencing.
Thank you.
Yep. And you can see that... I'm going to go back to the set that was previously submitted on the site plan. Scroll back up. I'm going to zoom into the... So the dumpster area, you can see there's a separation there. This dumpster area has its own fencing around it. The playground area has its own fencing around it. So there's a separation there, so that's not like they're right on each other.
Can you walk through the two areas?
You...
There's a little black line.
There's a little space there. I think it's more, you know, access for cleaning, if anything. I don't know if it's... I can put it to make sure I added them. Actually, do I have one on there? Yeah, so you've got three feet, 3.2 feet between.
There's possibly a gate there because of that curvy black line. Just wanted to know whether or not a parent would recognize it, but would you ever dismiss from that playground? And so would be no advantage to a parent even who wanted to be an observer? They'd have to come into the building and look out to that playground to watch the child play?
To go through, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
So can you zoom in a little bit more on the interior plan? Yeah, great. So I note that there's egress out of the toddler room and out of the infant room.
Correct.
But not from the other two rooms?
Yes. So because the toddler room and the infant room have a different use under the building code, it's not an educational use but an institutional use, they require two means from the space they're in. So even though the... You know, everyone else is sort of using this back door and the front door as their two means of egress, the infant toddler room, those rooms specifically need their own two means. So they come out through with everyone else out to here, and then they have their own means of egress out of the back of the building.
No, I understand that. But so where... You're obviously, because you know you're business, you're in compliance with requirement. But are you satisfied... I guess, Ms. James, I would ask you this. Are you satisfied that there is a sufficient or a small enough distance between those spaces and the two means of egress from the front and through the playground?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I have one. Mr. Lee? Ms. Rickards? Ms. Rickards?
So can we go back to the dumpster and a little bit more just detail on it? For example, will the dumpsters be covered simply because of things going in there and the children being playing back there? There are different insects and rodents and so on that can happen. Will the dumpsters be enclosed or covered? Or in a wall, will it be concrete? Or what kind of enclosure will that wall be back there?
So right now, we're envisioning a board-on-board, but I would have... We would be amenable to making something that's more sturdy towards the... Especially towards the play area. So we could do something that is of a masonry construction and submit that.
And the dumpsters will be covered?
Yes.
Yeah, they all are sort of self-covered.
I have another question slash suggestion. If there were to be any fire or emergency need for those rooms that do not have doors, is there a reason why you didn't put doors for each classroom to exit in emergency conditions?
So we didn't... Because of the flexible nature of those spaces, you know, there could be a potential where one room could have two doors and one might just have the sort of typical two for the building. I think we can take a look to see if there's a way that we can create additional means of egress.
I'm not suggesting I have a better plan. I'm just thinking if I'm a parent and I'm having my youngster in... May happen to be a kindergarten or, you know, a four-year-old room, and they've got to come back at fear's, every door, toddler, infant door, or from the front, how are we going to get them out of there safely, quickly?
Well, the playground area will also have an egressable gate.
They've got to come out of their classrooms and get over that playground area.
They can go to the playground area through the front door.
Or the front door.
Right, with the front, okay. Wish you had doors for every classroom to get out. It would keep them, you know...
It was sort of the balancing act of, you know, everyone getting out versus letting everyone in. So we're sort of sticking with what the...
Every door that we have in public buildings has the ability for someone to get out and no one to get in. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
I had an additional question. When you do the fire drill, will the children be exiting in front of the building? Or do they just go into the playground? How do you... So when we do that fire drill, the doors that are...
The doors that are closest to the classrooms are the doors that they will use to get out into the parking lot, like to get out, which is the same thing we do on Springfield Avenue. They just use the doors to their classrooms to go out. And even at that location, we don't have a door for every classroom because we have both upstairs and downstairs. So they go out the doors just like they would in school. There's not a door to every classroom.
So they would just walk out to this front or the parking lot?
Some will go to the back. The toddlers will go out the back in the emergency cribs. And whoever's in the front, the walking students, will come out the front or either the back to the playground, depending on where you are during the fire drill.
And then where do they go? In that... In this location, they've walked down that...
They're going to have to do... Do the... The toddlers and infants will wrap around and probably end up going out into... What's the street that's here?
Lehigh.
Lehigh. If there was a fire to get off of the premises, they would go onto Lehigh. And then everybody else will come through the front and end up on the same side because being that it's a residential street, it would be better for us to be there than it would be for Morris Avenue.
Just one question, just a quick question. I know that the property... I know this particular building has a basement, and you made a reference to it. Just to confirm that there's no proposed changes to, I guess, the layout of the basement area, which is why we don't see a layout.
No, there was no intention of doing anything in the basement other than potential storage, which is what it's currently being used for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more question regarding the egress from the building in an emergency. The rendering shows the fence around the playground and a gate at the sidewalk near the building. Is there an emergency gate out of the back of the playground in case you have to move everybody away? There is. It's just not noted. It doesn't appear to be noted on the...
Yeah, we'll make sure that there's... In compliance review, we'll make that as a weather condition or whichever makes the board most satisfied.
Thank you.
Ms. Rickards, do you have a question? No? Any other questions from the board?
Questions from the public? Mr. Haley, your next witness?
Yeah. We... Did you have a question? No. We have no further witnesses, and obviously, both of our witnesses that have testified this evening are here to answer any further questions from the board, the board professionals, or the public.
Would you like to sum up?
Yeah, just briefly. Again, I think a great adaptive reuse of this property, obviously well-experienced in operational of a childcare facility, well-experienced in the design of a childcare facility. We believe we have addressed all of the departmental comments, both from the various departments providing egress, egress, and the like. And obviously, any approval of this board would be subject to licensing by the Division of Childcare Services. And we'd look forward to the board approving this so we can have another childcare center in Union.
Well, as usual, thank you, Mr. Haley.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for a motion for application 2023-007, Brainy Act, Jr. be approved.
I make a motion that we approve Brainy Act 1178 Morris Avenue with the condition that all... They comply with all of the documents and permits.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Reverend Starling?
Yes.
Mayor Figurino?
Yes.
Mayor Figurino?
Yes.
Committee Member Bowser?
Yes.
Ms. Rickards?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Nice job. All right, with no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so ordered.